This conference will now be recorded.
Yes. All right, I'd like to call this work session into order. Just can you give me a hand with the roll call, please?
Planning Commissioner Opaschery.
Present.
Planning Commissioner Smith.
Present.
Planning Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Nutbrock.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Keeler.
Will be late and excused.
Planning Commissioner Jones.
He will be excused tonight as well. All right, well, thank you for that, Jess. I appreciate it. We are calling this working session so we can catch up on some important code updates. And rolling into 1.31, I'm not sure who on staff was going to take the Critical Areas Ordinance Code. Thank you guys for being here tonight, an hour early. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Yeah, that would be me. I'm going to handle the Critical Areas Ordinance update. I just want to throw a general disclaimer out here that, you know, this is, I think, the first time the planning commissions met at 5:30 for a work session and the regular meetings can start at 6:30. So we have an hour to cover the two topics, no matter what. I think we can, I think we can do it. So the plan is really just generally to stick to 30 minutes for critical areas and then 30 minutes for the MDR 16 code update. You know, and then anything else in terms of that's not discussed would get brought up in the, in the next meeting. So I want to also start by saying that I've brought Dusty Day with me here. He's online with us. He's WSP's Natural Resource Scientist. And so he's listening to the conversation tonight and available to answer questions. He's frequently involved in doing wetland delineations and natural resources delineations. So he's, you know, had lots of experience delineating wetlands, writing wetland reports, writing critical areas reports, and he's also helped out on a number of different critical areas ordinance updates that he and I have teamed up on. And so he has roughly about 20 odd years of experience doing that. So if you have some really sort of technical questions, he's available to help and he might need to correct me from time to time, depending on what I say, but. So the topic of tonight, then, last month, we kind of gave you a really general introduction to the Critical Areas Ordinance Update. Tonight, we're talking to you specifically about wetlands and the updates that are needed to bring the city's critical areas ordinance into compliance with the most recent best available science specifically from the Department of Ecology. And so, you know, there's a couple of points at which there's an opportunity for you to provide input, particularly, most particularly on with regard to wetland buffers. And so we're going to be asking you to think about what type of wetland buffer system or option, I guess, as we'll be calling them, that the city should, should implement. We have a recommendation for you and we'll kind of explain that recommendation. So last year in October, the Department of Ecology issued new guidance for wetland regulations. And that was, that was in October. And so they typically update that, you know, every couple of years. We last updated the city's critical areas ordinance in 2019. We knew some of this guidance was going to be coming out, so we completed what we had in 2019. And so that wetland guidance includes, includes a rating system for wetlands. And so when a wetland scientist goes out on site, they use that ecology wetland rating system because most jurisdictions across the state, or, or it might even be fair to say nearly all jurisdictions across the state use ecology's wetland rating system. Because they don't want to have to come up with their own wetland rating system and do all of their own science. It's theoretically possible for a jurisdiction to come up with its own wetland rating system, but I, I don't believe I've ever run across another jurisdiction that uses, or run across a jurisdiction that uses its own wetland rating system because you would have to gather all of the science on that and justify why you're using your own wetland rating system. And in in the final analysis, it might not be that different than ecology system anyway. So it seems like everybody uses ecology's system across the state. Go ahead.
Question, question, Ethan. The ecology wetlands rating system or guidelines and is the, are the wetlands currently shown in the county GIS?
Yeah, so that was one, that was another point that I am coming to, which is that the National Wetland Inventory, which is U.S. Fish and Wildlife, maps approximate wetland locations. Clark County also maps those. And so if you were to go onto Clark County Maps online, you could pull up both a layer for the National Wetland Inventory and then Clark County's own layer called Potential Wetlands Presence and see where those are approximately at. And they're really just an indicator. It takes a site specific delineation to go out and verify whether or not there's a wetland, what the quality of that wetland is and what type of buffer should, should apply to it.
For my benefit, do you have some idea when the latest, what is the latest information we have available from the, from the government, from the federal as well as state? How recent is it? Is it a year or two old or is it last year? Is that what we're looking at as far as?
For mapping?
Yeah, right.
Dusty, did you hear that question?
Yeah, sorry, had to unmute. Hopefully you can hear me. The the county updates their, their mapping system annually. I don't know specifically how often they look at wetland probabilities. But then for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, they have an online mapper that that covers the entire United States. And so it's updated frequently, but specific to our region and specific to a center. I can't say with any certainty how often those, that data is updated.
Okay, so let's just go ahead and jump into kind of these two primary issues that we're going to be talking to you tonight, wetland buffers and then wetland mitigation. So I think everybody generally understands what a buffer is. It's a, it's a vegetated area around a wetland that's meant to be undeveloped and to protect that wetland from, you know, essentially sources of contamination. It can also provide an area for, for habitat around the wetland. And the width of that buffer is really linked to the quality of that wetland and the intensity of the land use around it. And so the relationship is basically the higher quality wetland that you have or the higher intensity of land use that you have around that wetland, the larger buffer you need because that means there's more impacts to that wetland. So for instance, if you have picture, I don't know, a shopping center with lots of impervious surface area adjacent to a wetland, you're going to have a lot of stormwater runoff potentially going into that, that wetland, carrying things that are on the asphalt, oils and heavy metals and so forth into, into the wetland. Compare that to perhaps, you know, a park, which might have a lot of vegetated areas and have less impact on the wetland when the stormwater runs off of it. So that's kind of the, the general idea that you have there. And then lower quality wetlands, you know, which are typically not the ones that have standing water. And lower intensity land uses would require a narrower buffer or, or warrant a narrow buffer. So the buffer width is related to the quality of the wetland and the intensity of the land use. And the quality of the wetland also includes the habitat score of the wetland, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in a few minutes. So in this 2022 ecology guidance, ecology has three different options that jurisdictions can choose from to to select a buffer system essentially. And then so depending on what the center chooses, we'll put that system in the code and then applicants would come to the door to, in the center and say, and you know, and come to pre-op meetings and so forth and say, okay, what type of wetland buffer? How wide of a wetland buffer? I have this wetland on site. How wide of a buffer do I need? And we would look at the system that we've adopted and, you know, we could look at this table that we'll pull up a little bit later and and tell them what their wetland buffer width would be.
Would we typically, on an ongoing basis, when we get that request, is one of those things that we would do as a city? Go out to and actually look at that property? Or, or is it pretty much done in the office?
Sometimes we do that if there's, you know, some question, I guess, about the delineation and, and what's out there on site, then certainly we have the ability to go out there.
You don't have to go out there?
You don't, we don't always have to do that. So it, these three options that I'm going to talk to you about, option one, option two, and option three, option one is the most, there's kind of trade-offs that we're going to talk about. Option one is the, the most complicated to administer, but it also gives the most flexibility to applicants. And then on the other end of the spectrum, option three is the simplest to administer. But there's very little flexibility at all built in into that system. And so we're going to be asking you to consider, you know, kind of what's the right balance of of flexibility and simplicity to put into the center's code. So let's talk, I guess, a little bit more specifically. And I'm wondering if I can get Jess, if I can get you to go to page 14 of the, oh, sorry, page 11 of the PDF Planning Commission Packet.
This conference will now be recorded.
Actually, while you're grabbing that, I wanted to welcome Dusty. Thanks for coming to the meeting and also the planning commissioners who agreed to come early for the work session. I can't vamp anymore, Jess. That's it. Just kidding.
So this is option one. These are the buffer requirement tables for option one. There's two tables for option one. And so you don't need to look too close in detail in this, but I think that the relationships that we want to point out to you are that on the left-hand side, you have the category of wetland one through four, and there's different types of category one wetlands. For instance, a bog there in kind of that second row or interdunal or forested. So anyways, the left-hand column there tells you the category of wetland that you have. And then the top column headers tell you the habitat score. So the higher the habitat score, you have the higher buffer width you have, and then the higher, or I guess the lower wetland category, which is actually higher quality. So category one is the highest quality wetland. The wider the buffer you're going to have. And then as you move down in the table, the, the buffer, the buffer widths go down. And if you move left in the table, the buffer widths go down because you're decreasing quality of the wetland and you're decreasing the habitat score.
What does the habitat score a function of?
Dusty, are you, are you there?
Yeah, can you repeat the question?
What is the habitat score a function of?
The habitat score looks at, I think there's 12 different questions and it talks about the, the vegetated structure. So it could be forested or shrub scrub or emergent and how many species or if it's just dominated by one type of species or invasive species. It also looks at habitat features like standing snags or down logs. So those are just some examples of the questions that, that ask the reviewer to look at. And then, you know, we would put check marks or follow the directions and then add up a total score at the end. And that's, then that total score correlates to the buffer width based on that habitat score.
Okay, so I, I guess I was confusing. So I thought the buffer was going to be a function of the quality of the wetland and the adjacent intensity, the adjacent land use. And I don't see that here in this table.
Yeah. So we were just discussing that before the meeting because if you read the ecology guidance, it definitely says that, that option one is a function of those three things that you named, the quality of the wetland, the habitat score and the adjacent land use. But this table, I think what it assumes is that you have a high intensity land use adjacent to it. Dusty, I don't know if, if you have any more input on that question, but as compared with option two that we're going to be talking about here in a few minutes, this table doesn't seem to include land, the, the, the intensity of the adjacent land use explicitly. Dusty, I don't know if you have any more input on that.
No, I don't have any more input. You're right. It doesn't. I'll pull up the, the guidance and look at it while we're talking.
Okay. So the other thing I wanted to point out to you about this option one table, this first table that we're going to look at is that it's based upon, those width requirements are based upon the ability to reduce and average the wetland buffer by providing a habitat corridor and providing certain impact minimization measures, which are shown on page 12. And so for instance, if you have impacts for lights, noise, toxic runoff, there are certain things you, that the applicant can do, for instance, to point light away from the wetland. That would be one thing that they could do to minimize impacts on the wetland. And so to get to the wetland buffer widths in that first table, you have to use all of the available minimization measures, direct noise and light away from it, put a fence around the wetland so you don't have as much intrusion into it. Those types of things.
That's option one A.
That's option one A in, in the memo. And then option one B does not include those minimization measures. And that's on page 13, sorry, 14 of the Planning Commission Packet. So you're going to see slightly wider, slightly wider buffers there in that option. Because you don't have, you're not going to be providing the habitat corridor or the minimization measures. However, if, if the city selected to use option one, it would include both that first table and the second table that I'm talking about because the applicant would tell you whether or not they're going to use the minimization measures or the habitat corridor. And then you, that tells you which table to, to look at. So both of those tables would get included in the code for option one. Okay, so I need to keep moving pretty quickly because I'm going to very quickly move up, use up my, my minutes here. So option two takes into account some slightly different considerations. And that's shown on page 16 of your Planning Commission Packet. So that takes into account the wetland category and then the adjacent land use. Just give you a chance to glance at that one really quickly. So you'll see that that table is much simpler than those two tables that we just looked at. So option one is a little bit more complicated, but is more flexible. Then you have option three, which is the least flexible of all, but the simplest of all. And that's on page 17. And all that looks at is the wetland category and it sets a fixed, fixed width. So there's really no sort of flexibility or options for the, for the applicant there. So one last thing here on these, because we wanted to sort of, I guess, provide some theoretical examples to help make this a little bit better understood, hopefully. So on page six of the Planning Commission Packet is a table that tells you for a category two wetland with, with a habitat score of six to seven points, what the wetland buffer widths would be across those categories. And so for option one A, the wetland buffer would be 110 feet, for option one B, 150 feet, for option two, 150 feet, and for option three, 300 feet. So that kind of tells you what some of the differences are between, between these categories and the trade-off between simplicity and flexibility that we're asking you to think about. The last thing I'll say, and then I'll take, take your question, is we're recommending going with option one. And the reason is that there's not a lot of benefit in going with the simplest option because when we're talking about wetlands and wetland delineations, we're really talking to wetland scientists and people that, that do these things all the time and they're required to, you know, be certified in wetland science, that prepare these critical areas reports and wetland delineations. And so it's not as if we're having to explain these things in detail to, you know, mom and pop, landowner or, or what have you. Sometimes we do. But the, the point is that it's really that wetland expert that has to prepare the report and understand this stuff. And that's primarily who we're talking to. So there isn't a lot of benefit in going with the simple system because at the end of the day, the applicants are going to want the smallest possible wetland buffer, right? Even, even if they have a slightly harder time understanding that, that system, they're probably going to, that, you know, they're going to take that trade-off to have a, a more customized wetland, slightly smaller wetland buffer. So that's, that's what we're recommending as the system that you you know, provide input on. And so I guess I'll stop there and you can provide some input on that.
Question. Remind me again, are, are we measuring from a middle of a wetland outward? Is, is, or, or the edge of where we, where does that? 110 feet, for example? Is that from the middle, the middle of that wetlands out or, or the edge?
It's the edge of the wetland. And so that's called the high watermark of the wetland. And so, you know, the water in the wetland will rise and recede throughout the year. And so kind of that high watermark
Okay.
is where you measure it from. Dusty, I don't know if I got that right, or if you want to add any?
It can be very subjective, can it? I mean, I could think, in some cases, it's pretty hard to really measure that possibly. Unless you go out there throughout the year.
There might be, yeah, there's a little bit of judgment involved, but I don't think it's like highly variable. You know, it's perhaps a few feet or something like that.
But it is basically from the high watermark of the wetland outward?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So I, I like your recommendation. I was in favor of that because the reason you said it makes the buffers as small as possible. Two questions. I assume this means more impact on the city of having to review reports. Does the city have the expertise or would, would they be hiring out you guys to review a wetlands report? How would that work?
I mean, the city doesn't currently have a staff wetland biologist or a wetland expert on staff. So it would either be WSP, the city, the Critical Areas Ordinance allows the city, you know, even if WSP goes away someday, the wetlands, the Critical Areas Ordinance allows the city to hire and, and do sort of a third-party review on something, which I don't think is an option that it exercises very option, very often, but it could do that in certain instances if there was a reason to doubt.
Yeah, I guess I would suggest that we, when we talk to the city council, we'll make it clear that there is, there is a potential financial impact, probably small, to the city of having to review these more complicated applications. And secondly, would, regardless of what option we picked here, would a landowner still have to do to hire a wetlands expert and get a wetlands report? Okay, so the, the cost to a landowner is the same regardless of what option.
I think that that's true. And I'm going to ask Dusty to comment on that. But I mean, the wetland delineation form that he was talking to you about asks you all these questions about adjacent land use, habitat score, all of those things anyways. So it's something they have to fill out anyways, even if you have a very simple system, they still have to complete all of that stuff. So I don't think that there's any added cost to the applicant in, in going with the, you know, option one, which is more complicated but more flexible. Isn't that true, Dusty?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So I, I'm, I'm in favor of option one and inherent that that would be A or B depending on what the applicant wants to pursue, right?
Right. In option one A, they would have, if they wanted those buffer width, this is just reiterating what I said, they would have to provide a habitat corridor and use those minimization measures to get those, those buffer widths. So we didn't get a chance to talk about mitigation tonight. So I guess I was a little bit too wordy, but I'm going to recommend that we punt the mitigation discussion for next month, that you punt the mitigation discussion for next month to allow our time to talk to you about the MDR 16 code update.
Is there any decision we need to make on the mitigation stuff?
There's maybe just, not as much.
Because I didn't see.
Really, the only discussion or decision there is, is whether you accept the state's priority for mitigation, which is now switched to banks and in lieu instead of onsite mitigation. Right now, the city's code assumes you use or prefers onsite mitigation and then banks and in lieu are a lower priority. So you're going to kind of, we're going to kind of flip that over.
Okay. Just got a quick question for Brian. Is, is the, maybe that's Brian slash Ethan. Would it be worthwhile to have one of, one of your staff somewhere along the line that, that take a course or two and get some kind of certification, maybe even though it's low level, to do some of this wetland certification so that instead of, we'll say, instead of having to pay WSP, we have somebody inside in-house that could do a certain level of that. Is that, is that practical? Is that something that?
I think potentially, you know, currently, you know, staff deals with these things fairly regularly. And so that you sort of, even if you're not trained in that, you sort of build up a a level of comfort, you know, knowing that the report that you're reading from a certified biologist that an applicant submits is, you know, seeming correct or doesn't smell right. And if it doesn't smell right, then you can pull in an expert. So some training, especially on this more complex system, I think would help that sort of pass the sniff test of staff, you know? And then if it's, again, not passing that sniff test, then you can bring in that third party to, you know, to do a more in-depth review.
I would think that would be, I guess, there may be somebody on your staff who'd be willing to put the extra effort in to have those in their, your tool bag, so to speak, you know? Downstream, we had something and determined that maybe we can, we can resolve this in-house because they've had some, some specialized training, you know? I'm not sure what that means, but some training that says, I'm not necessarily certified, but I've been training, I can talk about it and I can explain it to you and so on. So just, okay, thank you.
Real quick, I'll try to move quickly through it. It seems to keep coming up the cost associated with doing with the new contract, the cityless center and WSP, is any of that projected into, are we anticipating any of that type of work or would that be added on in addition to?
I can chime in there. I mean, it would probably be added on because this is sort of a new regime and we don't really have a great idea of how much additional time. However, we do have a cost recovery model in place so that, you know, the applicant is sort of being billed for WSP's time. So if you have a more complex project or in this case now a more complex review process that we established, that would be reflected in that cost recovery. that would be reflected in that cost recovery model. So
That makes sense.
the actual impact to the city's budget should be minimal. It's sort of a pass through.
One thing, sorry.
No, go ahead.
One thing I might add to that is just that, you know, if I have, I review wetland reports that are submitted to the city right now. And if I have any questions, then I go talk to Dusty and say, you know, what's going on here? I don't understand this. And I mean, it's usually a very quick conversation. Occasionally I've asked him, hey, you know, can you review these recommendations? Can you review this part of the report? And it's like, you know, a couple hours of time. And I think that that's well worth it in some cases. So it's not really like, hey, we have to have this separate contract for WSP to do wetlands review work. It's just kind of like the occasional question or the occasional project that I ask Dusty questions on.
I think in a lot of cases, when you have consulting folks that have so many things under one roof, you save a lot of time in not having to source like the expert. It's like, okay, well, now staff needs to go and find an expert in the specific field. You could lose any savings you may have had by doing it yourself. So it, it makes a lot of sense what you're, what you're saying. Right now, we have like option one recommended by staff. I know Commissioner Uprock, you're, you're in favor of option one. Are there any other opinions on that?
I'm fine with that, too.
I just have a couple of questions to ask, to form my opinion. The last time we did this, we opted towards onsite mitigation opposed to, and then we sort of incorporated the banking system as a new written policy for the city that maybe wasn't included at that time. Did we also, at that time, I believe, we chose a level of where we wanted to be? Maybe that was in 2019. What is our existing option one, option two, option three? Where are we at right now? Because I believe we've made this decision before in the last five years. I remember doing it.
Yeah.
I think Dusty was even involved, maybe.
Yeah, yeah. In 2019, Dusty and I were working on the critical areas ordinance update. And so back in 2014, Ecology got, had updated its guidance and had a buffering system that they wanted you to use then. And we incorporated one of their options back then. I don't know that it directly, I'd have to pull this up. I don't know that directly compares to the three options that we're talking about here. Maybe, maybe most closely to option two, because it does incorporate land use intensity. But this is slightly new.
This is different, okay.
Slightly, slightly new in terms of the width.
It's new science, is what they're saying.
It's new science. And option two, it would appear that with less analyzation, you almost have a, an assumed narrower buffer for the class three and class four, if I'm saying that correct, in a, in a similar buffer, really with the, with the more critical areas. Does that, does that sound right? Or is, is option one absolutely giving the narrowest buffering options?
So I think we created, if you look at page 21 of the planning commission packet, it sort of gives you the comparison between the city's existing and.
Well, before we go that far, let me ask this on page 12, where it says NA. If you look at the table, table three on page 12, I believe it's page 12. For me, it is. Table three, wetland buffer width requirements.
So.
Yes, here, when we get into the NA, they're not applicable. Does that mean no, no buffer at all?
No, I think what that's saying is that if you have a category one wetland, then it automatically is going to have a habitat score of eight to nine points. And so
So there's.
there is no category wetland with three to five or six to seven habitat points. Cause then that bumps it down to, you know, like, well.
Okay, I understand.
Let me think that, it's, it's not that category, what, category one.
That makes sense.
But if you look at sort of, I don't know, four or five rows down the table, there is a category, category one forested wetland with habitat scores of three to five points and six to seven points. So it's basically just saying for that particular type of wetland, those habitat scores don't apply.
Okay.
Not, not that there's no buffer, but just.
Yes, thanks for clearing that up.
Yeah.
Did you have a second question? You said you had a couple.
I think that that's all of my questions, unless we were going to look at some comparisons on prior to making any decisions. Page 21, did we say, or before I interrupted?
21.
Yeah, 21 compares the existing system and the the, the new system that we're talking about here in the wetland buffer widths. There's obviously some ranges there, so it's, we're generalizing a little bit, but those, those higher quality wetlands are going to have higher or wider buffer widths under option two and three. And then under option one, those, those higher quality wetlands can have narrower buffers in some cases. I think the other thing to understand is that for those lower quality wetlands, category three and four, the bottom end buffer range is, is smaller. So for option three, for instance, it's 50 feet. But for option, for option one, it's, you know, 40 feet. Option two, I guess you can go down to 25 feet in some cases. So there's some exceptions here, but I'm trying to draw some generalities.
I think that that's where I was wondering if option two had the narrowest widths, but it, it appears only under circum, certain circumstances.
Yeah.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Any other thoughts from commissioners? All right, I think we could probably move on. I think we kind of have an understanding of where we're heading there. When do we officially make a decision on this? Or I think you're craft, you're going to craft language first and then we'll motion it into existence for.
Right. I mean, I guess what I'm hearing right now is the direction is kind of going towards option one. So we'll probably craft the language that way. And then that would become your final recommendation once you, you know, once we have a public hearing in here, go through that process. Unless we hear something in, you know, like next month or the month after where you're like, no, we left this. Now we want option two or.
Is there any input from Brian on, on the option preference? Or is that, is that wrong to, to even ask that?
No, I think that's, I think really we're looking for, you know, input from the planning commission.
Right, I understand.
But, you know, obviously there's pros and cons to each. The, the lower the option, the more, you know, sort of complex the review is. But it also gives the most flexibility. So I think there's definitely a benefit associated with that complexity.
Is there any pressure currently on, that we're feeling we could make some positive things happen if we were to incorporate one plan versus the other opportunities?
Not necessarily. I think whichever option we go with, it's going to be, you know, a little bit different than we've done in the past. A little bit more, maybe larger buffers than we sort of have become used to. You know, and that's just a result of the new science, not something that we have a whole lot of control over. So in that, you know, with the, the options that we're stuck with, probably the one that has the most flexibility and takes the most data in making the decision is, you know, seems to make the most sense, even if it takes a little bit more effort to, you know, to use that system.
Thank you. I know I said I was done, but just to follow up on what Dennis said, there is no option that makes it simpler or more cost effective for the land owner. Option two and option one is, is, is the same impact for them. Doesn't require more experts to hire, doesn't require.
Yeah, I think the only caveat is that cost recovery. So, you know, if it's taking us a little bit longer to, Ethan's group, a little bit longer to review, and we're doing that cost recovery basis, then they may have a little bit of a higher permitting fee just because there's that extra time. And I have a feeling that that extra effort will probably decrease with the learning curve of learning this new system. And, you know, in a year from now, when everyone's been accustomed to this, you know, it may not be that much more time than is currently spent. But, you know, it's going to take a little bit while, a little while for everyone to learn the new system.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Apply that. But as far as who they have to hire and what they, the person that they have to hire, you know, the wetland expert has to do. No, there's not, that's what I understand. There's not a difference. They're already looking at all this stuff. It's just how they present that in their report.
And the cost recovery, everybody's familiar with that, what that is.
Yeah.
Is, does WSP offer services to the general public for, for that study?
Well, so that's what Dusty does. And so some, sometimes we have developers that come to WSP and they want a wetland study or another public agency, another city or whatever, that's, you know, maybe doing a road project or whatever. And they need a wetland study because the road's going to impact a wetland. Then they come to us, but we can't, we can't, in the center, we couldn't prepare a study for an applicant and then review our own work because that would be a conflict of interest, if that makes sense. So we wouldn't.
But you are a resource for homeowners, landowners.
We, I mean, typically it's larger developers, not necessarily like a single property, single homeowner, but yeah.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Appreciate that overview. Any, anything else from, any commissioners here? Any thoughts? I think we're leaning towards an option one, but I definitely want to be democratic here. All right, so let's kind of just keep that in the back of our minds that option one, it sounds like you guys are suggesting, it sounds like we're, we're good with that. And we should probably roll into 1.32 before we run out of time. I think we've got about 16 minutes.
Yes.
No, 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 look, my job is to democratize access to the discussions. I just got to keep it short and sweet.
Thank you, Commissioner Akashari. So I'll be discussing the MDR 16 code update. Last month, we had a call into the planning commission meeting of someone requesting us to update the code per some various, especially a specific item in the MDR 16 code that's kind of been cumbersome for development. So along with that comment and experience from applicant feedback and staff in previous pre-application meetings, these various provisions in the MDR 16 code are clustering requirements, housing products, and density transfer requirements that have been cumbersome for developers. And the most notable of those three is the 10-unit maximum clustering requirement. LCMC 1840, the definition code doesn't provide a true definition of cluster. So that leads staff to interpret this as to mean building. So that means if a developer comes in for an apartment complex, the one building can be only, only limited to 10 units. And it kind of contradicts our density requirements. Because, for example, if a developer wanted to build two apartment complexes on four acres and they have to take into account for density, height, parking, landscaping and park requirements, as well as the footprint of the building itself. And they're constrained by that 10-unit cluster building requirement. It really limits them even meeting density, the minimum density threshold, which is like for MDR 16 is eight units per acre. So if you only have two buildings with 10 units, you're at 20 units on four acres, you're not going to meet the minimum density. So our recommendation for the clustering provision is just to eliminate it because they are going to be required to meet, again, density, height, parking, landscaping and park requirements. And that will constrain the development in itself. And so that's our recommendation to, to playing commission on clustering. Any questions before I move further to the next item?
Is this just for cottage housing?
Not cottage housing. This is a different section. It's just for MDR and mixed use zones. If you look at the mixed use zone code, it references from multifamily development to the MDR 16 design and standard requirements. So it's not for clustering or cottage housing. Specifically, the 10-unit clustering limit applies to multifamily apartments. Multifamily attached housing, I think, is the term that the code uses. So any one apartment building, if you, you know, read that, seems to say that you can't have more than 10 units in a building.
So it's, it's intended for cottage housing only, but the way that it's worded is making it so that it.
No, it's not intended for cottage housing.
The word cluster.
So in the context of the MDR code, cluster means building. There is a definition of cluster that's separate and specific to the cottage housing code, and we're not going to be talking about that here tonight. So sorry if that's a little bit confusing, but the, the code uses the term cluster in two different ways. One for cottage housing, which we're not talking about. And then one for multifamily attached housing, which is in the MDR code. And that definition, it, it doesn't define it. The code doesn't define it, but all of the context seems to suggest that that's one building.
The word cluster is being used there.
Right.
And then it's defined. Right?
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Ethan. Yeah, it's, it's not straightforward and we're trying to clear that up, especially for developers when they come in and they see what's cluster and they see cluster defined in cottage housing. And it just gets confusing. So our recommendation is to eliminate that clustering provision. And also throughout the MDR code, we're updating any term that uses any occurrence of cluster. We're either eliminating it per context or updating it to building, just to alleviate any of that confusion.
Better be written later.
Yes, that's our goal.
In kind of a tangent, the net, the net benefit, because you could read it properly, you would allow them to have a slightly higher density in their building. So it wouldn't be like a.
That's correct, yes. And that's our goal, so they can actually meet at least the minimum threshold for density in the, like the MDR code.
Any, any thoughts from?
I agree with the recommendation. Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I think we should probably just see a red line and approve it with. I, I don't know how you'll wordsmith it, but yeah, that.
Okay.
Sounds like.
And that is attached to this. So I'll move on to the next item that we've been, as we're going through the MDR code, we're catching these things to clean it up. Is the housing product requirement in the MDR code. It requires that any MDRs project that's five gross acres, not net acre, but gross acres are more, or more than five gross acres cannot include more than 75% of one housing type. And housing type is multifamily, single family attached, single family detached. So if someone comes in and they have five acres, they have to at least 75% of the site has to be multifamily if they choose. And then the last 25% has to be single family attached or single family detached. And that's also cumbersome for developers and has actually led them not moving forward with projects here in the city because it's a barrier in providing affordable housing. And it's also expensive for developers to accommodate that. So our recommendation is to either A, eliminate it entirely, this housing product provision, or at least increase that threshold from five acres to maybe 20 acres. Just because, especially in those smaller sites, it just, it just doesn't make sense in those scenarios.
Two comments. I didn't have time to go look, but I think there's a policy in our comp plan that deals with mixture of product types. We need to make sure we're being consistent with that. And I, I, I agree. I think we ought to increase the acreage threshold because Riverside, they were able to meet that threshold with a mixture of single family detached, multifamily. So you can certainly meet that criteria, but I would agree that it's probably tougher on the smaller, smaller parcels.
Yeah.
Was Riverside?
Forty-eight, I think, forty-five.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we agree with that. And there is additional guidance in the MDR code for like articulation and architectural requirements. But, and also in the MX mixed use zoning code, the zone as a whole has different product type requirements. But if you go by parcel per parcel in the MX zone, we're thinking that might be a little more cumbersome. So we have to see as a big picture. So we'll move forward looking at the recommendation, maybe going above that threshold from five acres to maybe 20. We can do some research as well in other jurisdictions of what they do, what number they, they stick with. Cause we do believe five acres is too low.
And we ought to look at the comp plan, too, to see what. We're being consistent with that.
Okay, the next item is lot beveling. So in. Okay, the next item is lot beveling. So in the MDR code, it calls this a density transfer, quote unquote. It's not truly a density transfer if you really look at the code because you can't exceed the maximum density, which is 16 units per acre in the MDR zone.
Oh, let me, let me say something.
Yes.
For some reason, we have got into the perception that MDR 16, that 16 is the maximum. It is not the maximum. Maximum is 14 for multifamily and, and single-family attached and 12 for detached. You can only go six to 16 if you do this bevel transfer. And so it is a devil, it is a transfer in my mind because you're allowing them to, to increase the density above the maximum. And so I guess I disagree with your, your comment.
No, I appreciate that, Commissioner Nutbrock. And I, looking at this just before our meeting today, I was seeing maybe having that logic as well. But in our comp plan, it says MDR zone. And in the MDR zone, I think the first provision, like just talking about what the MDR's code is, says the minimum density is eight units per acre and the maximum is 16. But like you said, there are the different product types.
Right. You can go to 16 with a density transfer.
Yeah. So I, I see your logic there on that. But we are typically, a density transfer actually allows you to exceed the maximum density in most occurrences in any jurisdiction you see. I'll discuss that more if we, we have time for the critical areas density transfer where we're actually allowing you to exceed the maximum density, but you have to meet X, Y, and Z provisions. So that's, I do see your, your point in that. Do you have anything to add, Ethan? I mean, I agree with what you're saying. It, you know, in retrospect, maybe we shouldn't have stated it this way in the memorandum, but it is, it is a density transfer, but it's very minimal and very limited because you can only use it when MDR is adjacent to LDR. So if it's MDR adjacent to another MDR project, you can't even use, and that seems like to, in some ways, where you should be able to transfer density around a site. So.
But the idea is, is to have some gradual transition between high density and the low density.
Yeah.
What that buffer is for.
Right. Yeah. And that, and that part of it makes sense. It's just extremely limited in its application in terms of, especially in the center, in terms of where you could actually use this.
Well, and I, I think that it ought, it ought to apply when you're adjacent to the UGA. I, I had some firsthand experience, and I was able to convince a hearing examiner to bevel lots out there between Riverside and our development in UGA. And at the time, it was recognized, the code should recognize that, that buffer ought to apply equally to the UGA. Because then you're trying to bevel that density from medium density to something else.
So we're, we're not proposing to change this or get rid of it, really just to rename it something else. Because, and Alec will tell you more about this, but we're going to talk about a density transfer from critical areas. So we just wanted to distinguish it. So the density transfer for beveling will remain in there. It'll be called something slightly different, but we're just trying to distinguish between those two types of transfers.
And again, I, I would propose that we include UGA in addition to LDR. Because as, you know, as we're growing, we're pushing against UGA. So we're going to have this problem continuously.
Thank you, Commissioner Nutbrock. That's a good point. We'll keep notes on that and include that in our red lines. But our logic in that is maybe, like Ethan was hinting at, changing the term to just lot beveling, just to kind of distinguish it from what I'm going to talk, talk about next, which I might run out of time by the time we get to that. But just to distinguishing from a density transfer from critical areas and then a lot, lot beveling requirements. So we are thinking the logic for like multifamily developments, they're typically sighted on very few lots when they're in MDR zone or mixed-use zone. So how do you apply that beveling technique if there's no lots in the interior to transfer that lot size from the perimeter to the middle? So we're thinking to only, we are, we're recommending that beveling, beveling should only apply to single-family attached detached projects because typically those multifamily projects are on one, two, maybe three lots. And it's just not, it's not feasible to actually try to use that beveling provision on those multifamily developments.
You know, I agree with that. But one thing I'd offer is we might want to consider to have larger setbacks. Because again, you're trying to minimize this high density next to a lower density. And if you obviously can't bevel, so maybe you have a larger setback from that lower density development.
Yeah, and I believe in the beveling code, but now we're saying multifamily is not applicable to it. But currently in the beveling code, I think the MDR setback can't be less than 90% of the LDR setback. Is that correct, Ethan? But now we're saying multifamily is not subject to that. So I agree that we should maybe look into increasing that setback, what, what it typically would be for a multifamily.
The, the other way to handle this is to, to increase the landscaping buffer. We have a section that talks about landscaping buffer for, between different types of.
Zones.
Yeah. And it might be appropriate to increase that amount of buffering, the type of buffering you do between a multifamily and even MDR and LDR.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. And we can explore that as well, and maybe do some research in other jurisdictions and how they handle that. And maybe we can increase the screening, landscape screening as well, just to really make sure the uses are compatible and alleviate any incompatibility or impact issues. I think I might be out of time.
Yeah, I think we've got about a minute. It sounds like on the critical areas, we, kind of got a very clear path. And I think on 132, like two of the things we pretty agreed with, and maybe there's this third item that you just, you know, this density transfer might need a little bit more discussion.
Yes.
I guess, can I just make one comment? You know, I, I don't necessarily agree with this 150% thing. But it's interesting that it's 150% of the maximum density allowed in the zone. But LDR doesn't have any maximum. So I'm, you need to think about how, what the implications of that are.
That's noted, and thank you for that comment. We'll, we'll accommodate that in the next time we bring this to you.
Let me go ahead and close the working session, although I'll throw it out for one last comment, if any, going once, going twice. Okay. So we're going to go ahead and close the working session. And before I call the, the actual meeting to order, if anyone wants to take a minute, I could, I can vamp for a minute if anyone needs a break, since we're going to go a little longer than usual. And troopers. Troopers. Usually like the chair would do that when he needs to go, but I'm good, too. I just wanted to be nice. All right. So it is 6:31. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if you guys could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance meeting.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Paul.
I was waiting for that.
Thank you, guys. Jess, can you give me a hand with the roll call, please?
Planning Commissioner Okushari.
Present.
Planning Commissioner Smith.
Present.
Planning Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Nutbrock.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Keeler.
Here.
And Planning Commissioner Jones Stolinski.
Correct. All right. And at this time, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the April 11 meetings.
I'll make a motion. Still moved.
Right now, the.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Nutbrock. Any discussion from commissioners? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries on. Though I didn't hear your.
I wasn't here for the meeting.
That's right.
But I agree, I, I either abstain or agree, but I don't disagree.
Okay. Well, you want to just call them abstain, just since you were.
Would that be the right way to do it?
You know, here's the thing that they, so Jess posts the meeting minutes. Of course, you aren't here to hear them, but she does post, so you could review them before. But if, the, the safe bet is, but I, I don't want to push it.
Okay, I'll abstain.
Okay. So we have, was it one, two, three, four ayes, one, one abstention, which is very safe. I use that a lot.
Which is unusual.
I use that a lot in other meetings. All right. At this time, there's no one in the lobby, so there's no public comment here. And I don't have my other machine, so I, I'm not on the, on the meeting. I was going to call it the Zoom, but the go to meeting. Anyone there? Okay. Any, any email or fax or teletype public comment? No? Okay. So there's no public comment. We will move into public hearings. We, we don't have anyone here, but I'll just go ahead and open up the, the public hearing for both items. And if someone happens to come in during that time, we can listen to that person. So at this time, we're moving on to 2.6 public hearings. The first item is the family daycares code update, and there's a memo that comes with that. And so at this time, I'll open up the public hearing for anyone to comment. And I guess I'll give it.
That's too much time already.
I'm, I'm waiting for the floodgates. Okay, I'm hearing no comments in any medium, physical or virtual. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing just on the family daycares code update. Going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for the manufactured homes code update. Anyone who would like to speak on this may feel free to do so. Okay, I don't think we have anyone here. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing for the manufactured homes code update, which is 2.62. And we can roll into any unfinished business.
Hold, hold it. Don't we have an opportunity to discuss each of these?
Yeah. That is a good question. I thought with the public hearing, it was.
No, usually.
It was for us. But okay, sorry. Good, good catch. So, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing part of it, but I'll open up for discussion for us. And I think we have, I guess we can just pull up the family daycares memo up on the screen, and I'll pull it up online.
Because they, they were answering several questions that we had previously.
Okay. Yeah, sorry about that. I didn't mean to blow right through that. I was just on a roll because, you know, the public comment was so quiet. Yeah, it was overwhelming. I just wanted to get going.
Go over with us just what those changes were that you made.
Yes, I can do that. Yeah, I was, I was waiting for the segue to do that.
Yeah, I just blew right through. I was going to get us out of here at 6:40. But we should, we should probably have a full commission meeting. So sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, Commissioner Okushari. So Ethan, I'll be, I'll be discussing family daycare providers, and then Ethan will follow up with the manufactured homes. Be a bit of a refresher because we skipped this topic last, both topics, last planning commission in April. So last you've heard from this was in March, and we started this process in February, I believe. So first, I'm just going to provide a very quick overview of the purpose of this code update from the RCWs. First is RCW 3670A450, which requires that the city must allow family daycare providers in all residential dwellings in commercial and residential zones, and cannot impose conditions on family daycare, family daycare providers more restrictive than other dwellings in the same zone. However, the city may require the facility to comply with those items as set forth in the RCW. And those things are such as they have to comply with lot and building dimensions, provide a passenger loading facility, and limit the hours of operations and so forth. And basically, all of those that are listed out in the RCW, we are requiring the family daycare provider to comply with those per the RCW. And then secondly, is the definition of family daycare providers, which is a childcare provider who regularly provides early childhood education and early learning services for not more than 12 children at any given time in the provider's home in the family living quarters. And we've updated the definition in the code when we look at those red lines showing that we've updated per the RCW definition. So the first item I wanted to cover has to do with expanded noticing requirements. In the RCW 3670A450, it does list that the city may require the applicant prior to obtaining their state license to notify the adjacent homeowners, directly adjacent to the property. The planning commission asked if these could be expanded outside of what's outlined in the RCW. And we actually consulted with the city attorney Bronson Potter about this matter. And basically, the point, the consensus with him was that the noticing requirements cannot exceed them with the state specifically outlines, because then you're not complying, you're not in compliance with the state at that point. So our recommendation is just to keep it as is, as we proposed in the code, we have proposed in the code, is just noticing to those adjacent property owners.
So what, what do we consider appropriate notification? And what proof does the provider need to show the city that they've done that?
That's a really good question. So, I mean, one point I was going to make is this is not really a notice. Like you see, you've run across public notices before, you might have received one at some point in the past. This is really just notification of those adjacent property owners. And so I don't know what's adequate. I mean, we could supplement this and with something and say that they have to submit, you know, a letter or something saying that they've notified their adjacent property owners, and they could even get a signature or something like that from them. But we, it's really kind of, in some ways, it kind of boils down to trust because unless the city calls each of those adjacent property owners, it really can't verify that, that this person did that. And there's no.
They just need to show proof. They send a registered letter to all their.
Yeah.
Adjacent property owners.
Yeah.
But I don't know if we're allowed to do that based on Bronson's suggestion for noticing.
Well, I think the comment in the March planning commission meeting, I think Commissioner Nutbrock was asking whether we could require a higher level of noticing similar to what we do for certain types of land use applications where, like, for instance, we say that we, we send a public notice to all property owners within either 150 or 300 feet, depending upon the type of land use application. That is, so he was asking the question, can we do that for family daycare providers? And the answer is no. All we can do is require that they notify the immediately adjacent property owners.
And the RCW is silent on what notification involves. So I would think that we could specify what is appropriate for notification. Yeah, I just don't want to, you know, homeowner coming in later and saying, oh, I didn't know. We ought to have, a registered letter was sent to you on this date. Is that the responsibility of the, of the owner of the property? Or is that the city? Send out the registry?
No, I think it's, it's the.
Provider.
It's the provider. Yeah. And they have to do that before they obtain the state licensing. And I believe how we're setting it up is they have to get state licensing before they even approach us, to get like a business permit. So there's, there's a process they'll have to go through, but they'll be required.
Ten bucks and get a registered letter.
Yeah.
That'd be the safest way, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and we could just double check with Bronson. That's okay. And which we imagine it should be. And then we can update red line code to reflect that.
So they're currently notifying their neighbors and then going to apply with the state and then applying with the city.
So what that means is that, you know, if the consensus is to require that they have a certified, that they send a certified letter to the immediately adjoining property owners, that means that in your motion tonight, when you are recommending either approval or denial of, of, of this, that you would include that in your motion, that the code, draft code should be updated to require the certified letter be submitted. Because that's not currently in the draft as it's written right now.
Okay. What page is the, not to put you on the spot, what page is the, the draft on for the? motion? Or is it in the?
You're talking about the draft code?
Or the drop, the the motion that we may or may not be voting on.
We didn't write, we probably should have, but we didn't write out the draft motion. We just basically made a recommendation to you.
Okay.
That.
I was at, I was at city council last week or the week before, and it had been written out, so it was like. It's like, we, we get the same treatment, right?
The recommendation on page seventy two, you could probably cut off the first four words and read from there. I think that would work for you.
Oh.
Plus, any changes that they make.
We're more capable than the city council.
It's on the record now.
We can make up our own motion.
You know, I know all those guys listen to our meetings from, you know, minute zero all the way to the end, too, so we're.
That's Dennis, not we're.
I need Bronson to get some disclaimer language going for. Um, well, thank you. Did you have anything else in regards?
Yeah, I do have a few more items. The first of those is at the last planning commission meeting in March, when we covered this topic. Planning commission asked, since we were updating this whole code, we caught this in the MDR sixteen code specifically, a list. And it's a weird verbiage, so we're trying to clear up the verbiage that the conditional uses in the MDR code are those that are conditional in the LDR code. And so with that language cleanup, the planning commission asked if those conditional uses in the LDR code seem fit for the MDR zone. And those conditional uses are nursery schools, manufactured parks, manufactured home parks and subdivisions, daycare centers, public buildings, telecommunication facilities and churches. And staff have determined these conditional uses are acceptable in the MDR zone, so we're just recommending just leave the code as is. Because again, that we believe those conditional uses are okay in both zones.
What if a nursery school is not located on the same side as a private or public school or church?
Then it's not a conditional use. Then it wouldn't be permitted, it'd be prohibited at that point, because it's not outlined directly.
It falls outside of everything.
Yeah.
Is that what we want?
It's a good question. Any thoughts, comments?
We didn't.
This, this says the nursery schools are conditional use when it's located on the same side as with a public, private, public school, private school or church. My question is, and the answer is, if it's not located in one of those places, it's not allowed. That doesn't make sense to me. Why would you not allow a nursery school?
Is that one of the proposed revisions?
No, it's not. It's just something I just noticed.
We're, just to clarify, we are how we're permitting nursery schools is very similar to how we're going to be permitting daycare centers. So some zones, daycare centers are permitted. As in MDR and LDR, daycare centers are conditional, so we're just treating them the same nursery schools and daycare centers, but we have updated the definition of nursery school, which we could show you that per consultation with Bronson, just to differentiate nursery schools from the other daycare uses, because nursery schools aren't subject to this RCW. Because in the RCW defines agency, and then agency specifically says agency does not include nursery schools, but agency applies for family daycares and daycare centers. So we're trying to differentiate those uses, but also treat nursery schools permitting wise, the same as daycare centers.
In this chart, where we got nursery schools, it's conditional and permitted. Is that? Is that? Is this provision here that it has to be located on the same property as private, public or churches is, does that apply?
Then that table that you just showed, yes, it would apply. We just didn't fill that all the way out in that table, just to show just a general overview.
We're allowing nursery schools in a lot of places, but if I understand right, this provision here that says where they can be located applies. So somebody couldn't come along and take a home and turn it into a nursery school. It's not located on one of those pieces.
We actually, in the red line code, I forgot to mention this, you brought up a good point, we did add to that definition that used term there for nursery schools when located on the same site with public or private school or church. We've added also or within a residence, just for LDR and MDR zones.
So it would become conditional for them.
It'd be still conditional, I guess.
Why are we not seeing it on?
It's in the red line code revisions, and also, if you go further down in this memo, we have recommendations and it outlines that.
So that that would still prevent somebody from say, say one of these big companies that, you know, nationwide nursery schools want to come in and build a purpose-built facility out at the junction. That wording would prevent that from happening.
It would depend, because it would it might fall under as a daycare center, because the definitions we are updating. If it falls under the RCW that we're discussing, then it would be a daycare center if it's not, doesn't qualify as a family daycare home, and if it doesn't follow the RCW guidelines that we're going over and can meet the definition of a nursery school, then yes, you're correct, but we, I see what you're saying.
I guess I'd, I'd take out those conditions in that, that conditional use and just say nursery school.
Just straight nursery school and take out the rest of that.
I, I don't, I don't see any advantage of restricting it to those places.
To like the same side and that type of thing.
The way?
It's like the same side as a church or was that the one you're talking about?
I think, go ahead, Ethan. I think what you're saying is you would like to see nursery schools be a conditional use. Or eliminate the rest of the verbiage.
Well, you already have them as conditional use in most zones. My, my issue is requiring them to be on a public, private school or a church. I think that's too restrictive. Like that would prevent, you know, one of these big companies from coming out there in the junction and building a big nursery school.
Well, this, so this language is in the LD, in the LDR and MDR code. Yes, the MDR code references LDR.
But in the JP, is it that specific? Does it say?
It just says nursery school, correct? I believe it just says nursery school, and then it just reflects to this definition here. So it's a little bit of a mixed bag, but I think your point is taken. So if we eliminated that language about in the public or private school or church, then it would just be a conditional use everywhere, except some zones like JP. I think. Yeah, JP is permitted. Have to pull up that table.
Well, it's conditional in town centers, permitted in town general. It's not allowed in town employment, and it's conditional in.
Yeah, because our, our, we were just treating the same as a daycare center, how they were already currently permitted or conditionally permitted in each zone, so we just reflected it the same way in each of the zones. That was our logic behind that.
I would say I'd be okay with making it easier for nursing schools to be here. It doesn't sound like there's a lot of affected zones, since the junction does allow it, I think.
Yeah, it just, it just says nursery school. It doesn't have that additional verbiage in it like it does in MDR and LDR code.
So how many, do we know how many zones it would affect then? It sounds like.
Look at page one sixty four, the PDF. So if you look at over to the right hand side of this table, you may have to make it smaller, unfortunately. I don't know if that's visible or not, but so if you look at that right hand side column or a couple of columns there, those are nursery schools right there. So it tells you in the current code and the proposed code what we're doing. In most cases, it's matching, and the green is where there's changes. And so, for instance, in medium density residential, it's not mentioned. In residential professional, it's not mentioned, and it would be conditional use under the proposed code. In mixed use, it's not mentioned, and it would now be permitted. And in urban holding, what do we mean by N A, isn't it not mentioned in there, or is it?
It should be not mentioned as well.
That should say, sorry, that should say not mentioned. It would be a conditional use in that zone. So really, the only zone where you could argue that it's not currently permitted is the MX zone where it says not mentioned, and it would become permitted. But all the other zones, it would become a conditional, a specifically mentioned conditional use.
Yeah, but my, my issue is the restriction on the nursery schools in MDR and LDR. It's interesting that daycare centers are in there without that restriction. It's nursing schools that have the restriction of public, private school or church.
Yeah, I mean, I think the intent somehow is probably that that's more compatible with residential areas, and so that's probably why they specifically mention that. So I guess the effect, if we remove that language in the LDR, which references into the MDR, the effect is going to be to be more permissive of nursery schools located in their own building in LDR and MDR. I think that's gonna be kind of the net effect of that.
Well, I mean, we're already, we're already allowing daycare centers without restrictions.
I, I think with the, with the daycare center and the family day, I, I would imagine a nursery school has a little bit more structure, a little bit more like maybe more of a purpose-built facility, but I, but I will say I would be okay with it being more permissive.
Question, so what we're proposing is daycare centers and nursery schools the same conditional items, but an in-home residential daycare provider would be automatically permitted for LDR and MDR.
Has to be, has to be by the state.
By the state.
Where are you seeing the nursery schools are conditional, whereas daycare centers are not?
It's in the conditional use paragraph.
The conditions that are placed upon them in order to exist based on the same size as the church.
It's the condition that's in, the conditional use that's in the code right now.
Well, I've gotta say, I never knew how passionate you were, Dennis, about nursery schools.
Well, I, I just tried to, I look at this and are we being consistent?
Right.
And we're not.
But I, I agree with what you're saying. Yeah, it makes sense.
So I don't, yeah, we, I, we don't have a problem removing the language about being in school and churches. And if that's, I, I don't see a problem with that, just as long as you realize that that will make it more permissible for a standalone nursery school to be located in LDR and MDR.
So what do you think the difference between nursery school and daycare centers? Not, not by definition, but practically.
Well, that's a that's a really difficult issue to, because the state doesn't define nursery school. I couldn't find a definition anyway. I researched for a long time, and I couldn't find anything.
And I have I have some real issues with our definitions here. Because we, we have this new family daycare provider, which means in a home with less than twelve kids. We have a nursery school, which means any home place or institution.
Can we, sorry, can we, just for everybody's benefit, which page are you?
Well, I'm just looking at the red lines on the definitions. So nurse, a nursing school can either be in a home or, or, excuse me, can either not be in a home or have less than twelve kids. So a nursing school with less than twelve kids is a family daycare provider. There's a, there's a junction there. And then we go on to say that daycare centers mean anything that is not defined by family daycare provider. So a daycare, a nursery school is a daycare center.
It's one or the other based on if it has less or more than twelve.
Yeah. And so it's, we've got these three definitions that if you do a Venn diagram, there's a big junction in the center where they're all the same. And I think we're creating ourselves a problem here. You know, if Dennis came in and was gonna put a family family daycare home in his house, and his wife was a teacher, I'd say no, no, no. That meets the definition of a nursery school, and you can't do that. So I, I think this needs some more work, unless you want to convince me I'm all wet. Which I could.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've, we've tried to shoehorn this family daycare provider in our existing structure and definitions. And I think we need to take a look at how that dovetails with the existing definitions of daycare center and the nursery school.
Yeah. To clarify your point, we added that definition of agency from the RCW definition. And then if you look at daycare centers, if you scroll down, yes. We reference agency in this to clarify, I think it's backup. You might skipped over it. Right there. Oh, you just passed it again. Right there. Daycare center shall mean an agency that does not meet the definition of family daycare home. And if you look at the RCW, it says agency doesn't apply to nursery schools. And that's the only time RCW mentions nursery school anywhere that I've found. And so we're trying to distinguish these uses from a daycare center and family daycare provider that falls under that term agency, and then nursery schools don't. And so that's kind of our intent there. Like you said, it is kind of confusing, and how does this apply in the real world? We're not a hundred percent sure, but we're trying to distinguish this in our code as much as possible. And we did consult with Bronson on this, and that was his advice to us as well. Let's just try to distinguish that since the RCW outlines I, agency, what falls under agency and what doesn't. So that was, that was our intent here. I think, I think your point is taken, though, that there's kind of, in the real world, there's, you know, you could be looking at something and go, is that a nursery school? Is that a daycare center? I don't know. They're kind of doing the same thing. But for purposes of regulation, as Alec said, we're trying to sort of separate these things out. So I mean, we don't have any guidance from the state about, again, what a nursery school is versus a daycare center or a family day, family daycare. So I mean, I guess we're left to sort of define it based upon the city attorney's advice.
That's why I ask, you know, how do we view, what's the difference between a nursery school and daycare center?
A daycare center has more than twelve kids?
Well, a nursery school can have more than twelve, if it's not in a home.
I, I think it's instruction versus taking care of, but it, it, it's kind of a subjective thing, like, oh, we teach them, and then it it puts you in that, and they're like, okay, we're not gonna teach them. We'll take care of them, and it puts you in a category that's permitted.
The only distinction in our definitions is the nursery school the children have to be in objection under the direction of a professionally qualified teacher. But what is a nursery, what is a daycare center? I, I just think we've got ourselves, created ourselves a mess here because these definitions all overlap.
Why do we have nursery school? Do we need to have?
Well, so that's what my comment was gonna be. There was a question last month about, well, how do we treat nursery schools? And we tried to answer that question, and it sounds like unsuccessful. We could potentially just get rid of the term nursery school in the code, and everything falls into either being a family daycare or a daycare center. And whether they have a teacher, you know, a certified teacher, or they don't, or all that kind of stuff. So I think that would be my recommendation is to get rid of that term nursery school.
Those two definitions would be mutually exclusive. They don't overlap. As a daycare center is anything else that isn't a family daycare provider.
It's not a, it's not a bad approach. Either you do that or you normalize like the conditional aspects of it. We scratch our heads on the exact.
And those are initial approach with this whole code update in general. And then the nursery schools got problem, which was a good thing to bring in this discussion, just because it, it's a gray area. And so it sounds like we're heading to the direction of just eliminating nursery schools outright, just because they would fall under a daycare center, since they're not a family daycare provider.
And it also simplifies eighteen two seventy, because in there, there's provisions for a family daycare provider and a daycare center, but there's nothing in there for a nursery school. So how do you, how do you? There's provisions for a family daycare provider and a daycare center, but there's nothing in there for a nursery school. So how do you, how do you regulate a nursery school?
Thoughts from other commissioners? Just maybe ax the, the nursery school?
I certainly would be in favor of making. Player cleaner. Yeah, the question I have before, forget about it, is that usually when we go over code updates. We're actually looking at a red line.
We could pull up the red line here. This is the red line code here.
That's the entire code is in red line?
Yeah, it's not in red color. We do, we do it differently when we're doing it through our legal team. This is how they tend to do it. If we do it internally, we actually leave it in the actual red lines. But we could probably revert to that for this purposes.
I think in the future Bronson's likes things in a certain way in this legislative edit. And so we're giving it to him in that way to prepare for. City council, but in the future, we don't mind including this, you know, in red. So you can see exactly what's changed. And then prior to the city council meeting, we'll have to keep it in legislative. Yeah, we'll have to convert it back to legislative edit.
You know, all the edits here that you are here that you're proposing for each section of code.
I, I think red is underlined and then strike through.
Yeah, I think just for consistency, it might be better to stick with a legislative format, not to counter Ethan, but um, so it, you know, new text is underlined. Removed text is struck through. And that's how it needs to be as it goes through the ordinance process that did the code publishing.
So I don't want to rush you along too much, but I think we took care of that nursery school issue, I think.
I, I think with the consensus is we just eliminate it.
I have one question. Are we sure that we, do we have any registered businesses that are nursery schools currently?
I think there's. One at, at the heritage center?
I think they can cut, this won't prohibit them from calling themselves whatever they want. They could still call themselves a nursery school, but for the city regulation purposes. They would be considered either a family daycare or a daycare center.
If they are, then they'd be grandfathered into the previous nursery school rights, right?
Well, they wouldn't, it would be easier on them. So they wouldn't need the grandfather.
Would be easier on them?
Yeah. Cause they wouldn't have conditional, like they wouldn't have to be on the same side as a church or a school.
I mean, we could include in the definition of a daycare center slash.
Nursing school.
Nursery school.
We could, we could do that too.
We're just thinking about it, I think.
I think Commissioner Noprock, you said you were a CPA, but are you sure you don't have a law degree in there? I, I think we can go either way. I think that's what we're hearing. How many more do we have on this?
Let me ask, is it possible to leave the code, take the, 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 uh, the, uh, nursery, nursery?
Nursery school.
Nursery school out of the code.
That's what, that's what we're proposing.
In our definitions. Of daycare center. Or, or agency, whatever. We could put some words, we could put something in there that just says. Also called, could also be called that, but not, not put that in the code. So the code's clear, clean, but the definition.
I'm going to have to double check this with Alec, but I think that the definition of daycare center came from state law, right?
Came from what?
It didn't. The state. And so when somebody, when somebody goes and to the state and tries to get a license and say, hey, I'm going to have a daycare center. That means a certain thing to the state and a certain kind of license. And so I think we were trying to be consistent.
And trying to keep our words out of their RCW.
Right. And again, it goes back to that agency definition and the state RCW says nursery, nursery schools. Our agency does not include nursery schools. So how we have our definition set up right now, we couldn't just add nursery school because then it wouldn't. Be consistent with the state's definition.
I think the path forward is to just remove nursery schools and then just. I think it's cleaner.
They, they fall under the umbrella of daycare center.
Right.
Yeah.
As far as like how like our ordinances apply to them. Everyone okay with that? I think it solves that. How many more do we have Alec on two, six, one?
There's only really one other item. I kind of covered pretty much everything else in the proposed revisions. The only major item left is the last planning commission meeting. The planning commission asked if we could prohibit family daycares in the car room overlay district, the C three zone. And this is because. There's currently no residential uses in that zone and staff did verify that. And if Jess, if you could go to, maybe if we look at. That table, page one sixty-four, when we're looking at the zones comparisons. So currently we're proposing to permit these in all residential and commercial zones per the RCW as it requires. That comment came up because again, there's no residential uses in that zone and. Also in the C three zone. New residential developments are, aren't allowed anyways. So. Why do we need to permit these even though they're not going to occur anyways? So we considered looking at prohibiting these. And we also consulted with Bronson as well on this matter because we, we saw your point in that because. If we prohibited these, they can't occur anyways because there's no residential use and no residential. Uses are allowed. But. Per legal review, temporary dwellings are allowed in this zone. And therefore family daycare providers must be allowed. And also that RCW again says. You have to prohibit these in the zone anyways. And. We don't see family daycares occur in the future anyhow, again, because we're, we're prohibiting. Any new residential development anyways. But ultimately our goal is to keep it permitted for any future reviewer of this. And making, ensuring if WSP or new staff are in the picture. That the cities remain compliant if this code was to change anytime in the future. So that was the advice we got from legal counsel on that matter. And I don't know if you have anything else to add to that Ethan, but that was, that's the direction we got.
The, I think the crux of it is just that in the C three zone, temporary housing is a permitted use. And so. To meet the legal requirements of state law, you have to allow for family daycares to be located in any residential. In any residence in a residential or commercial zone. So to be compliant with that, we have to allow. We have to allow family daycares in the C three zone. However, all of this really has no effect again, I think is what Alec is saying because there's no residences there now. At some future point, there might be, right? I mean, the center is going to. Be doing some sub area plans for downtown and Timon Landing. At that point, there very well may be. The possibility of having residential uses in the C three zone. And so our recommendation is to permit. Family daycares in the C three zone because if that ever happens, then no one's going to remember. I guess I will, but nobody's ever going to remember to update family daycares and make, and make sure it's still compliant with the state law. And since it has no effect anyways, why not just permit them in the C three zone? I think that's what.
Be like a time bomb in the code or something.
A little bit.
There's plenty of those there already.
It, it makes a lot of sense. Uh, any, any thoughts from commissioners? I, that makes a lot of sense to me. I think we should just be compliant and eliminate the time bomb.
Yeah. And then I have two really quick items and then I'm done. So I want to speed through too.
No, no, I, I wasn't rushing you. I just wanted to, to see, to kind of control the discussion.
And they're really minor items, these two. So Jess, if you could move to page one thirty-two. At the packet. I believe the planning commission also pointed this out to us, but the mixed use zoning code used to be located in eighteen one fifty. And we eliminated everything that has to do with the mixed use code and that. So we're just cleaning it up. So it shows there, we eliminated it there. And if, at the top of this code section, Jess. There's a small reference there to MX. So we just eliminated that.
Tiny.
Yes. So we're cleaning the code up slowly, but surely.
Thank you.
And then if you skip over to page one sixty, Jess. We didn't have provisions for hours of operation and I believe it's a little further down in this section. Right there, H. We added operate with any timeframe between the hours of six AM and eight PM. And per the RCW, it says the city may impose this condition. But you have to take into account of non-traditional workers that may need childcare at odd hours. But also be in respect to the adjacent uses and remain compatible. So we thought this timeframe may be best for. These uses adjacent to additional, uh, existing residences. And then that's basically it. So any other, any other comments?
Question about the time it will be implemented or it just can be if need be.
It will be. The, the city has a choice to choose to do it and if they do, what timeframe. So we're choosing to do it.
Five AM or five thirty or, you know, if this is the choice is six o'clock, the time you drop your kids off, never earlier.
Yeah, be.
I don't have that problem, Jeremy. What time is it?
I, I'm a bit sympathetic to, uh, to young parents. I, I would be okay making it five AM. It's some, some folks have a big commute, might need to.
But, but the other thing we're trying to balance is the disturbance in.
In dropping off. Yeah, that's a good point too.
Balance that, but that is the dilemma.
Guys want to split the difference, five thirty?
I just, I just wanted to bring it up and I don't feel real strongly about it.
I don't think there's really an enforcement issue here unless there's a, a neighbor problem.
Just some flagrant. It's a good point. We also didn't have any comment on the public hearing either. So.
I don't see that's, I don't think that's an issue.
I, I'd be okay with it as is, uh, everyone's pretty much okay. All right. Well, I think we're good.
Ready for recommendations?
Yes.
I think, did someone keep a list of? You did, okay, great.
Well, I got two. One was. Require notification of adjacent property owners.
Certified mail.
I can't read what I wrote there. Via certified or via registered, is it registered or certified? What's?
You can do both actually.
Which is. One of them signed.
So, so certified means like someone actually written, got it and registered is just the post office saying, we definitely mailed it. So I think certified is more. Yeah.
Coming back to you.
Yeah. That's when the postman hands you the thing and you sign it and then they rip that off and they say like someone at the house physically.
Arizona for six months and they don't pick, but you just need to send it to them. Maybe registered is better than certified. You really need them to sign it. If you prove, prove that you sent it, you send a notice.
Well, a lot of, a lot, I think for lawyers, they do both, like, but I, I don't want to split hairs.
In my experience, certified was usually the option when that was used for land use. Notifications. That's why I've seen the most of.
I, I think we do certify them. I know I've had to issue some legal.
Yeah, certified isn't the signature where you get that card back. That's actually signature confirmation.
Oh, that's signature. Oh, I thought that was certified.
Yeah. So you can do both. You can do like. Certified mail, which is usually how I will mail things out. And that's when you get tracking and it says that someone actually came and picked it up at the post office. So you don't get a signature back, but it's been handed to someone. Versus it's in the mailbox. It's actually.
What are your thoughts?
So certified is.
I misrepresented it.
The fact that they actually received it.
But, but there's no signature.
Somebody received it on their behalf.
Yeah, I, I had misrepresented it. I, I think at the post office, I usually tell them I want a signature and they just sent me out.
Right, right. And it's like that little green card.
Exactly.
If the city starts getting some issues on that, we can always come back and revise.
What is the, what does the city use? Maybe just keep consistent with what the city.
I just use certified mail when I mail stuff.
Thoughts on consistency? All right. I think we're okay with that. Just certified.
And then the other change I noted was. Remove nursery schools from the code. Those are the two changes I noted.
Those are the only two I had.
Put that in motion there.
So are we okay with a motion? We ready for motion? Any more discuss? I'm sorry. So would this, would, would this motion? So we don't have a red line. So this motion would be to approve the red lines with these changes. Okay. Anyone want to say the, the motion? I'll leave it to you.
Does the city council listen? I move that the planning commission approve and send to the city council. The. Family day, family daycare provider code updates. With the exception of we change, we add the notification to adjacent properties via certified letter. And that we remove all provisions for nursery schools from the code.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. That's unanimous. Any, any nays? There's no one to nay and no extensions. Nice work. Thank you. Thank you for dropping the motion, Commissioner Noprock. You guys ready to move on or did we want an hour break before? All right, let's roll into, I was, I should just skip it like we did last time, like I did last time and go into unfinished, but I guess we'll just go into two, six, two. Please.
All right, I'm going to be covering that one for you. I'll try and make it as short and sweet point as I. Can. So, but just as a reminder, especially, I have to constantly remind myself, especially because we're working on family daycares at the same. Time what these two code updates are about. And you lot, we last spoke to you about this in March. So. State law requires that the city regulate manufactured homes the same as site-built housing. There are particular things that the city can regulate about manufactured homes and those are. That they can require that the manufactured home be new and or designated. Designated has a specific meaning and we can talk about that a little bit. That it be set upon a foundation and enclosed at the bottom. And that it comply with local design standards and that it meets state energy code. Those are the only things that the city can regulate with regard to manufactured housing. There were some questions that planning commission brought up. In March, one of those was can we prohibit manufactured homes? And we sought Bronson's input on that as well. And so there's nothing in state law that says that a community can't prohibit manuf. Sorry, let me back up one second. The question was, can we prohibit manufactured home subdivisions in communities? Okay, that's different than prohibiting manufactured homes on individual lots. So we're talking about larger developments, subdivisions in communities. Can the city do that? There's nothing in state law that says that the city can't do that. However. As part of the comprehensive plan update, there's new provisions for what has to. What the city has to do to meet. Housing requirements and what it has to include in its comprehensive plan and eventually in its code. And so if you look at RCW thirty-six dot seventy A, which is located on page two eighty-six. Of the planning commission packet, the PDF page two eighty-six. This is an excerpt of thirty-six seventy-eight zero seventy. We've highlighted. This tells you what elements have to be included in a jurisdiction's comprehensive plan. And to summarize that really quickly, a jurisdiction has to inventory and analyze existing and projected housing needs. Across to income categories. And the jurisdiction has to provide, show that it's providing sufficient capacity for different housing types. And one of those housing types that's specifically mentioned in there is manufactured housing. So if the city were to prohibit manufactured housing subdivisions in communities, potentially what that would do is essentially make it more difficult for us to demonstrate down the road here in a couple of months, like in, over the summer and the fall, that the city has enough capacity to accommodate manufactured housing within, within the city. So for that reason, we're not recommending that you prohibit those at this time. What could happen is that we analyze this, which we're in the process of doing right now in the background. We're creating a document that's called a housing needs assessment that'll look at sort of all, analyze all of these different things, what type of housing is needed across different income categories, and then accommodating all these different types of housing, including manufactured housing. Depending on how that comes out, you could then decide to prohibit manufactured housing subdivisions in communities at that point. But if we did it now, we think that that would be a little bit too premature. So that's kind of the staff recommendation on that issue, and again, that was sort of vetted with, with Bronson. There was a question about, there was a question about modular homes and what those are, and so we did a little bit of research on that. And we've, essentially a modular home is housing that's built off-site in sections or, or modules, and then transported to the site and assembled there. The difference between a modular house and your manufactured house, manufactured house is also built off-site in a factory and then transported to the site, but the, a modular house has to meet local building codes. Whereas a mobile, sorry, a manufactured house meets federal safety and construction standards. And so it comes pre-certified basically as, as meeting those requirements, and then it's just placed on the, on the lot. So that's the essential difference between, at least from a regulatory perspective, between modular housing and manufactured housing. We provided some pictures of modular housing in the planning commission packet, just kind of as a point of reference. It looks a little bit different than your typical manufactured housing. It can be fairly attractive and even fairly expensive. So the last point I want to make on modular housing is it's not really the subject of this code update. So we've more or less left that issue alone because it's modular housing is not subject to those state requirements to treat it equally as site-built housing. So what we've done is the, the, really sort of the two changes that we've made are updating the definition of modular housing to match the state's definition of modular housing. And we've updated the definition of single-family detached dwelling to include modular housing. So basically modular housing, even though it's not the subject of this code update, it would end up getting treated the same as any other single-family detached housing. So that's kind of the approach that we're, that we're taking on that one. Really quickly, I'm going to run through the changes to the code that we've made since March. We, there, there's also sort of this third category, right, mobile homes, and that's another term that you've heard. Mobile home refers to a type of factory-built housing that existed essentially prior to 1976. It was constructed prior to 1976. So it met a different set of standards. In 1976, the federal government created new construction and safety standards for manufactured homes. So anything that was built after 1976 had to meet those federal standards. Mobile homes, some people call them trailers, met a different standard prior to 1976. So the approach that we're taking with mobile homes is just to prohibit them citywide because they don't meet current federal construction and safety standards. So we're, we're making that clear in the code that mobile homes are, are prohibited.
Do you include, I know that this code references park metal, park models separate from mobile homes. I notice you didn't prohibit park models. I think we need to clean that up to some degree.
So we, we did address that issue. It's somewhat indirect. But if you look at RCW 35A dot 21 dot 312, it says that the city cannot prohibit the placement of recreational vehicles in existing manufactured home communities. And then if you look at the definition of a recreational vehicle under state law, it includes park model, park models or park model recreational vehicles. So what we've interpreted from that is that the city cannot prohibit the placement of a park model. This is also called tiny homes. You may have heard the term tiny homes. So if somebody wants to place a tiny home or a park model inside of the city's only manufactured home community, which is Country Hills Estates, then the updates to this code that we're proposing to you would allow them to do that. And, and again, through discussion with Bronson, we're understanding that, that that's what the city has to do. So the city can't prohibit park models, at least not.
So, but we're.
They, go ahead.
We're, we're allowing new manufactured home communities or subdivisions. And we're prohibiting mobile homes in those. Why are we not also prohibiting park models in those manufactured home communities or subdivision?
We can't.
State, state laws.
Yeah, state, state law. I probably didn't provide a very good.
I, I understand what you said. That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, so let's pull up RCW 35A 21312 because I think this will hopefully make it a little bit more clear.
What does that reference again?
RCW 35A dot 21 dot 312. Okay, let's see here. I'm going to have to take a second to find this again, but there's, is it in subsection three or four, if you scroll down? Okay, I think it's in that subsection three there. Yeah, except as provided under subsection four, the section is a code city, or this listener is a code city, may not adopt an ordinance that has the effect directly or indirectly of preventing the entry or requiring the removal of a recreational vehicle used as a primary residence in manufactured mobile home communities. So then, if you go to the definition of recre- Okay, yeah. So we've updated the definition of, of recreational vehicles per the state definition, and that includes park models. So therefore, they would be allowed in, in manufactured mobile home communities. Okay, so one of the other changes that we're making, and this is in LCMC 18180, and I think it would be helpful to bring this one up too, Jess. So this is page 257 of the PDF, and this is the red line code. And so this code is the manufactured home installation standards, 18 dot 180. And it's a little bit, we don't have the total history on how this was put together, but it seems like this at one point regulated mobile homes. Because if you look at that provision there, it's crossed out, but it was provision 17. And it says that they had, that manufactured homes had to have a per- permanent steps and landings installed at all exits in compliance with LCMC Title 15. And then the one below that, it says they would have to have a perimeter masonry wall surrounding manufactured homes to fill space between ground level and base of home. Foundation shall extend a minimum of six inches above ground level and shall be fully secured, blah, 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 blah. So we think that this probably is some really old relic that used to apply to mobile homes. Because if you think of us, steps and landings, that's usually kind of what you see on a mobile home, but not really on a manufactured home. So for manufactured homes, they're going to be required, if you scroll up, Jess, to the bottom of the next page, I believe it is. Sorry, the, just keep going up. Yeah. Now you're at the bottom of the next page. And so manufactured homes will be required to be set on a foundation, and the, the space from the bottom of the home to the ground being closed by concrete or an approved concrete product. That's directly from state law. So that issue is taken care of in terms of the foundation and the, and the enclosure around the bottom. So we don't think we need that reference below to the, to the landing and the foundation and the, and the perimeter wall and all of that. It's, it's sort of duplicative, and it doesn't really make that much sense. Then finally, I guess not finally, but getting near the bottom here. ADUs, accessory dwelling units, that's the code that we created. When was that? Last year. In the ADU code, we prohibited manufactured homes from being an accessory dwelling unit. And unfortunately, in consultation, consultation with city attorney, he says that because ADUs are site-built housing, we have to allow manufactured homes as an ADU. However, if you think about what, what it is that we're doing here, one of the requirements of manufactured homes is that they be designated. That term has a specific meaning, and I think we should maybe scroll to that as well. But the essentials of it are that it has to be composed of two 12-foot wide, 36-foot long sections. And so if you think about what the size of that is, that's pretty big. You're not going to be able to fit that on very many lots. I mean, you'd have to have a fairly significant, a significantly large lot in order to fit a manufactured home on it. And then it would also have to meet, it would also have to meet setback requirements, height requirements. And one of the essential requirements of ADUs is that they match the design of the single-family home. So that manufactured home would have to have siding and a roof pitch that matched the single-family home. So I guess what I'm trying to say is it seems like a very narrow set of circumstances to me when you could place a manufactured home on a lot and call it an accessory dwelling unit, even though it's theoretically possible to do. So making that update makes the code, again, compliant with state law to treat manufactured housing the same as site-built housing.
Yeah, because otherwise you'd never have another ADU. You'd almost eliminate ADUs if you had that, that size requirement, is I think another way to say part of that.
Right. You could have, you could have, yeah, you could have many other types of ADUs, but if all you, you did was require that they meet that size requirement of manufactured homes, then you would rarely have an ADU.
Got it.
Okay, so temporary needs housing, and I forgot to write down this code reference. Alec, I don't know if you can find that quickly, but basically temporary needs housing, the idea of that is that somebody has some kind of a medical hardship, and they're allowed to have a temporary housing, you know, maybe it's for a relative or something that's living there on their property for a certain amount of time, a defined amount of time. I think it's three years. And it's only on, it's only on lots that are, I think, five acres or larger. And so one of the types of housing that can be used as temporary needs housing is a manufactured home. However, it says in that, in that code that you can have a single-wide manufactured home, but we're updating the definition of a manufactured home to be designated, which is two parallel sections. So we're making that change here. I debated back and, back and forth on whether to do that. I might still be able to go either way, because if you have somebody that has a medical hardship, should you really require them to have a designated manufactured home? Yeah, so that might. Yeah, that might be one change that we, in your motion that you say that we shouldn't, shouldn't have that. We should just revert back to the code as it's written. Yeah, yeah.
It happened here at the city here about four years ago up in the on the south side of Center Road, on five plus acres. Set that up, and that happened. It's now gone, but it was set up for that purpose. The single, it was a single-wide, but.
I think that was the very first thing I worked on after I became the city's consultant.
That's the one I want to go, as far as I know, we were bad.
Yeah. And then the final change, really simple one, is just that there was a definition of manufactured home in the critical areas ordinance, 18 dot 300. And so because we have a definite, a new definition of manufactured home in 18 dot 40, which is the definition section that applies to the entire code, we're just deleting that definition of manufactured home in the critical areas ordinance so that they don't conflict. So that's it. Those are the changes that we made since March. Our recommendation is for you to recommend to the city council that they approve this code as written, or as, as, as redlined there in those various sections. And so if you wanted to change, again, if you wanted, the one change we just now talked about was the, the temporary needs housing and not requiring that to be a designated manufactured home.
The designated manufactured home get, forced it to be double the size, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Any, any discussion on that? I, I think I would be more apt to not put that hardship on someone. I, I think we, we, a couple of us said that.
I don't think there's any problem providing the larger unit. Again, we all know it has to be, they're going to have to have the space for it. So that's, everybody has to meet setbacks as well.
What about the rest of the changes?
Can you go down to 18, 247? It's down towards the bottom. You've, you've got a redundant sentence in there. Red line for 18, 247.
Can find that really quickly here.
See, you've got two is redundant with, with F above it.
I agree.
Yeah, I keep trying to wrap my head around why we mention duplexes but not tri- I'm looking at the definitions. I, I think we've got a mess here with respect to multifamily units.
Are you in the definition section?
Definitions for.
Okay, so I don't mean to cut you off. I, I do a little bit, but I think I know where you're going with that discussion about multifamily and what is multifamily and what is not. That's going to be the subject of the, one of the things that we're going to correct in MDR 16 code update because we noticed that as well.
Okay.
So if you're satisfied with that answer, we don't have to update it.
So this, this red line definition isn't part of what we're approving? Or you're going to promise to fix it?
So you might, maybe you're looking at the MDR 16. Let's get to the definition section of the.
You're right. This is probably out of that section.
Yeah, the same section is kind of in.
Yeah.
So we'll have that as a new business in a upcoming meeting.
Good.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we need to tighten up to, so we know what we're really talking about, because.
No.
Comments for later.
That's a good point. It looks like you have agreement too, which is good.
The other thing is, you know, nowhere in our text is there dwelling, single-family or dwelling, multifamily. It's always, you know, I think the definition's the wrong place. You know, if I find single-family detached, I go to the definition and S, nothing there. I have to know to go look for dwelling, single-family. So you might think about that too. The definitions are.
That makes sense.
So, so we currently have some suggestions for a code change. We have red lines in front of us and we had one, one piece that was going to make it easier on the ADU side. Any other discussion?
Yeah, can you go to the, the red line for 18, 180 on the manufactured home? I can just talk to it, you know, 18, 180 dot 080, the title's requirements for manufactured slash mobile home subdivisions. And then the title for paragraph below that is requirements for manufactured home communities. So I'm questioning why mobile homes is in the subdivision title. It's left out of the.
All right, we're trying to find this.
What was the code you referenced? The red line for 18, 180.
So I can pull up 180, 70, but I'm not pulling up 80.
Are you looking in the, the online code?
Oh, no, not.
This is starting on page 256.
Packet has, there's an 18, 180 and 18, 190 in my packet.
Okay, say it again now that.
Okay, so 18, 18, 180 dot 080. The title includes mobile homes, which we're saying aren't allowed. And then in 18, 180, 090, we just say manufactured home community. So you're, I, I think you just missed the mobile homes in that first one.
Commissioner Netrock, you're correct in that we, previous versions, we included mobile home. And we tried to catch every instance and we just didn't catch this one. That was it. So good eye.
All right. So any other discussion? So that, that's resolved. That's going to be deleted. Any other discussion? What we're looking at now is putting forward a motion that would approve the red lines that staff presented to us, with the exception of our change to not force that larger ADU size. And I forgot what the term we used. Designated.
It was in the temporary needs housing. Let me, let me just run over the changes as if I have them right now. So in 18, 247, which is the ADU code, we, there's a duplicate of reference to manuf- allowing manufactured homes as, as ADUs. And so we're just going to eliminate one of those references. For temporary needs housing, which is, did we find that code reference? Sorry. We're going to not include the red line, the suggested red line that would require temporary needs housing to be designated, a designated manufactured home in two sections. So we don't include that change, it, some, it'll allow somebody to have a single wide manufactured home as temporary needs housing. 18, 270, 060 is the reference for the temporary needs housing. And in 18, 180, there's still references to, to mobile homes and we'll eliminate those.
And then, and then everything else would be approved as is, I think, is what is in front of us now. Except for those two.
Can I add one more?
Yeah, okay.
The red line for 18, 140, 020.
Let's go there just so we can all see it.
Was it 18, 140?
020.
That's the MDR code.
Oh, that's not part of this. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know it's confusing.
I just have notes everywhere, so.
That's, it's great that you do that. All right. So, so we know what's ahead of us. Any other thoughts, comments as to approving the red lines that they've put forward, except for the two exceptions we mentioned? Anyone want to put forward a motion to get this kicked off?
Let's see if I can, let's try this. I make a motion that we approve the manufacturing, manufactured homes code update as provided with the redlining changes, with the following exceptions, as denoted by Ethan for our discussion.
Second. Oh.
You did, no, that's good. I get a motion and I get a second. Any last discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there, that was unanimous, so there's zero nays and zero abstentions. Thank you, guys.
I just want to say thanks to the planning commission. I know that was a very, it was a tough topic for me and I think it was tough to work through, but thank you.
I, I think you guys did a really good job of presenting it. You presented it very understandable way. All right. So, well, thank you again, guys, and thank you, staff, for doing such a good job on that. I think we've buttoned up 262, 261, 262, we've buttoned those up and we have no unfinished business on the agenda. At this time, do any commissioners have any new business they'd like to bring forward? Going once. Okay, hearing no, uh, new business, we'll roll right into 29, which is 291, the Community Development Staff Report, please.
Skipping around here just a little bit, item one, which is also located further down in the table, number one, that's the Lockwood Meadows subdivision. I think I mentioned this last time, they had, they received preliminary plat approval, I think it was in 2021. Now they're coming back for final plat approval, as well as a critical areas permit to impact the oak habitat on the site, which is really pertains to want that 40-inch oak that's right along Lockwood Creek Road. I think people have probably seen it as they drive past that site. And then also a tree cutting permit. And so they initially proposed to remove four trees on the site during the preliminary plat review. And they weren't meeting all of the requirements for a tree cutting permit. So we imposed a condition on them to file a tree cutting permit and a critical areas permit and have those approved prior to their engineering approval. That's the process they're going through right now. There's a significantly greater number of trees that they're proposing to remove on the site now, because they hadn't completely surveyed the site. So now they're proposing to remove 161 trees on the site instead of four. And we therefore made them, we re-noticed the SEPA and had them update the SEPA checklist to include that new number of trees, because we wanted the adjacent property owners in the community in general to know that there's a higher number of trees that they're. They generally vary in size from like five or six inches on up to, I would say, 12, maybe 14 inches in some cases. Most of them are cotton wood trees as well. And then there's a few scattering of like fir and a couple of smaller oak. So we're working with them on that. That was out, that went out for public notice and we received 35 odd public comments on that, which is the most I've ever received. There was the country, sorry, not Heritage Country Estates, which is immediately to the north and west of Lockwood Meadows, submitted almost all of those comments. And they had the same letter that each property owner, and they're submitted. But, so the city's compiling a, a response to that. And, you know, we'll, I guess, send that back out or post it on the website or something, so that those property owners know what that is. And they brought up issues about the tree cutting, the SEPA, whether it should be an environmental impact statement instead of a, a mitigated determination, non-significance. Anyway, so we're addressing all of those issues with them.
Is there a threshold on, on number of trees? Number of trees, all of a sudden you follow a different category as far as what you have to get permission for?
You can, I think you can remove up to, see if I can remember this. It's possibly three trees in a calendar year on a lot that has a residence on it. So if you go, that's under a type one tree cutting permit. If you go above that, it's considered a type two permit. And that's generally what happens with a larger development like this, and they have to remove multiple trees on the site. You're into a type two tree cutting permit.
What's the threshold for the diameter of the trunk to be considered a tree?
Five inches.
Five.
Yeah. Okay, we have, item 51 is the Advanced Builders Fourplex there, kind of in downtown. We've not heard from them in a little while, so we're not quite sure what's going on there. Stevens Hillside Farm, I mentioned last time that they filed a variance for setbacks on that. They also filed a development agreement to increase the maximum building lot coverage in impervious surface area. And then they also have a final plat application in the door. So one of the options, do you want to jump in here on that? One of the options that that is being considered is that it may be more appropriate for them to go through a code update for the lots they're requesting a variance on. And so that might be something that comes to you as soon as next month. So that would essentially be decreasing the setbacks, the required front setbacks, not to the garage, but just to the living area, provided that they, and we'll get into this as we present you some of this, but provided that they upgrade the architecture of the home. So I'll leave, I'll leave that one at that, and then we'll sort of walk through the information and stuff.
I'd have a hard time changing the code just to accommodate them.
It would be for everyone.
So I'll weigh in here a little bit. So I, you know, after discussion at the last meeting, we worked with, talked with the applicant about some of the concerns and sort of the, the wide range of this variance as it was presented to us, which was significantly more number of lots than the initial conversation that was had. I think that was pointed out back, I think it was November, December of last year. So we had a meeting with them, kind of expressed our concerns, talked through it with them. They resubmitted their variance, but they actually increased the number of lots instead of decreasing the number of lots. So after some further discussion and consultation with the city attorney, you know, we're looking at probably recommending that they either go on a, you know, a lot by lot basis for variances. The sort of larger variance that they currently are proposing is sort of a worst-case scenario. From what we understand, from what they've told us, they don't select the floor plan for the house that's going on a particular lot until the lot's sold and they work with the buyer to, you know, basically figure out what product they want on there. So this variance that they've currently submitted for was sort of a worst-case scenario, where they're looking to, you know, ask for a variance so that they can fit the, you know, largest footprint or most restrictive footprint house on the lot. The reality is that whoever buys each of these lots may not want that product. They might want a smaller product that doesn't require a variance. So, you know, if that's the case, they would basically, you know, if someone comes in and they want a house that does require variance, they would have to come in for a variance on that specific lot. And depending on, you know, the percentage, that would either be a type one if it's less than 10% or a type two with notification if it's over 10% variance. The other option is to consider, as Ethan mentioned, a potential code change that would apply not only to this particular project, but citywide. And we would allow a reduced front yard setback to, not to the garage, we want to maintain that 20-foot minimum setback to the garage to allow for people to park it in their driveway without hanging out into the sidewalk area. But if you have a architectural feature like a bay window or a porch or something of that nature that projects farther forward from the garage, then you would be allowed a reduced setback because of that architectural feature. So we have, this is something that we haven't really fully developed, but that's sort of the concept, at least at this point. Again, the, from what we saw in this variance request, it was features like that that were driving the need to reduce the front yard setback. It's not like they're pushing the garage up. And again, that's not something that we, we would support at a staff level, because we've probably all seen that in neighborhoods around where you have, you know, a large pickup or something and it can't actually even fit in the driveway. So definitely want to avoid that sort of situation. So we're, at this point, we've reached back out to the applicant to kind of discuss our concerns about the, the variance as currently proposed and with sort of these two options to see if they have any feedback. And then we'll kind of see where we go from there at this point.
If it's a variance, Brian, if it's a variance, you're handling that in-house. If it's a coaching, you're going to come back to the council or back?
That's correct. That's correct. So, you know, I think, I think we all are on the same page, at least at a staff level, that the variance as currently proposed is not something that we can agree to, because it's too wide-ranging. It's, you know, 90% of the lots or something like that is what they're currently asking for, which is well beyond sort of the purview of a variance. So, you know, the options are, if they want to go the variance route, they can do that individually. And then, you know, those will get each processed individually is, and that's going to, you know, have a time and a cost associated with it to the applicant. Or we can look at this code change potentially, but that would, as you said, come back to the planning commission and then to council ultimately. And obviously there's a timeframe associated with that too, to go through that process, so.
Does that process, Brian, to get the variance, is there a cost associated with that?
Yeah, so there is a, a application fee for the variance, if that's what you're asking.
Is it just a set fee, regardless of how much time you spend on it?
Uh, I think it's a different fee for type one versus type two, but other than that, no. So, again, they've applied for a type two variance, sort of mostly subdivision-wide. That same type two fee that they paid for that, you know, we would, we would refund that, because we're not processing the variance as proposed. But then they would have to pay that same fee for a lot if they were looking to do more than a two-foot reduction in the setback, so.
So the recovery doesn't apply in the variance, the recovery of funds?
Yeah, I don't think we typically do a recent reimbursable agreement for a variant. Oh, is there?
Yeah, there's 180 for a type one and a type two, 240 for a type three variance. And they all three have the note for reimbursement. I wasn't sure.
So we'll probably have more information for the planning commission, one way or the other, at our next meeting. And while I'm talking about next meetings here, I'll interrupt Ethan and also let the, the board know that we have completed our outreach for the open, online open house of the Parks Plan Update. So we have some results of that that we will be circulating via email. We also have some updated policies and I think that's the right word, my brain's failing me at this point. Goals and policies that will circulate for the new Parks Plan. And then we should have a draft. Goals and policies that will circulate for the new parks plan. And then we should have a draft ready to bring to the planning commission at our June meeting to talk about and, and provide some feedback on. Go back to your regular.
And I'm, yeah, no, no worries. I'm going to turn it over to Alec just briefly and he's going to talk to you about item sixty, which is a home occupation. Yeah, this is, um, I think it's the, I believe it's the first one we're permitting under the new home occupation code. And so it's a massage therapy business inside of their home and Heritage Country Estates. Is that the name of the subdivision? Yes. So we actually had to get some input from their CCNRs. We got their CCNRs. There's some language in there saying like anything other than a residential use is not permitted. So the applicant had to go back and get a letter from her HOA stating that this is okay. So we got that. And then we're reviewing the staff report right now. I should be issuing it in the next week or so. But there's criteria in there that can have outdoor display of goods associated with the business. You can't do exterior alterations for the business.
No signage.
No signage. And
Limiting traffic.
Limiting traffic as well. PM peak hour traffic. She's proposing to operate between nine AM and two PM, which falls outside of the AM and PM peak hour traffic. So she's not inducing more traffic during those peak hours. And I believe her application says she's only going to have three clients a day. So it's pretty minimal. And she'll be providing parking in her driveway as well. So it seems to be pretty cut and dry permit with the, this new code. The final thing that I wanted to mention is not a part of the community development report.
Can I, before you go in, can I ask a question on the?
The home occupation.
Yes, I guess for Brian, on the Highland Terrace, this says you, you gave them final plat.
Is that finished?
Yeah.
Oh.
And I guess I'm, I'm surprised you did that with all the sinkholes in the road up there.
Yeah, so I think those are being treated through their warranty period. Tony's been working with them on getting those repaired. They had to bond and they have to, you know, basically they have a guarantee. So they either fix them or if they don't, then we have a mechanism to be able to, to fund those repairs.
That was interesting. Their fix is even sinking.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a mess up there.
I'm, I'm not, I'm a little out of the loop on what's going on over there.
There's a large patch they made and it's sinking. There's probably, in the intersection, there's probably a foot deep sinkhole. And there are probably three or four other sinkholes. I mean, somebody did a really poor job up there. My concern is what's the city inheriting here?
Wow. What deep, huh? It'd mess up your vehicle pretty bad.
It would.
Have to turn in the swimming pools.
So I just wanted to bring you up to date really quickly. You may have read this in the newspaper. This is related to the comprehensive plan update. The Clark County Council selected a population growth for, for the twenty year planning period from twenty twenty five to twenty forty five. And it, you remember, we presented these to you at some point. There was a low, a middle and a high. They selected a medium high, sort of their own custom rate, which equates to one point four percent annual growth and a total population for all of Clark County of seven hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty four, which is, if I remember right, that's give or take maybe a hundred and fifty thousand or so above, above the middle. The middle, according to OFM at least, and according to state law, is the most likely scenario to result. They took input from quite a few people and the, and the meeting was continued from like April to, to a date in May. You know, and there was a range of people that, you know, as you can imagine, that said different things. The city of La Center, along with all of the cities in the county, submitted a letter and comments saying that we were recommending that they select the middle projection. And council member Servini was there as mayor pro temp to present that. And so anyways, I just wanted to let you know that the county selected a population growth rate. Now they're going, the process moving forward is for them to allocate that population to the cities and that, and the rural area of the county. And so, you know, the, I guess the practical implications of that are that the city of La Center, as well as other cities in the county, will, since they have to plan for a higher population, that means that they will have to also plan for a higher number of public facilities and also plan for, to finance those public facilities. So that's kind of the practical implication of selecting a higher.
Enlarging the UGA.
Potentially enlarging the UGA, right? A greater likelihood of enlarging it than there, there was if they had. Ethan, just a clarification. I just pulled up the projection numbers. The middle projection for twenty forty five was six hundred and ninety eight thousand. So it's about twenty thousand. So it's not, it's twenty thousand across the county. So it's not that much greater and, and that hasn't been allocated yet. So we don't know what that yet, what that means for La Center.
Thank you, guys.
I'll wait for my opportunity for comments.
Ah, okay, we could do that. Are you guys good to go with the, uh, community report? Okay, awesome. We will start with Commissioner Knuprock on planning commissioner alternate.
What, what is the status of the city hall in the old Public Works Building? I keep hearing rumors that somebody's coming in.
It's a good question.
So the former community development building has been leased. They are doing some renovations. We haven't heard a firm timeline on when they plan on completing those renovations. I think they're kind of doing some of the, the work themselves. So I think it's taking a little longer than if they would have necessarily been contracted that out. But they are, you know, working over there and, and planning still to open the coffee shop with sandwich, deli and ice cream and have some meeting space over there. The basement of this building has been, or will be leased, assuming council approves the lease tomorrow evening to a local company called Y Racing who does marathons. They did the resolution run here and, and they do them throughout the Northwest. And then the.
They're taking the whole.
They're taking the whole basement area with the exception of our records room and some of the other server room and some of those, those rooms that are used for city use down there. And then the former city hall. We're still drafting the lease language. We have a letter of intent from Clark Cowlett's Fire Rescue to have them locate some administrative staff in the former city hall.
Wow, so good news.
Brian, on the old Public Works, are we, are we, have we received some? Are we getting some lease payments on that now already?
Yeah, they're, they're paying. They, they are paying, yes.
Is it, uh, public information publicly available? The price of the lease on the basement of the building here?
It was twelve dollars a square foot annually, which I think works out to about, I think it was about eighteen hundred square feet. So it's about eighteen hundred dollars a month because the twelves cancel each other out. Twelve dollars a foot, twelve months and a year. So.
So, Commissioner Hill, comment?
Nothing, thank you.
My well-trusted colleague?
Yes. No comment. Thanks.
I was just going to thank everyone again for coming out to the work session an hour early. And, um, yeah, and for being so responsive when I text and email. So appreciate you guys.
Actually, I would like to say, I think you guys did a great job on the MDR sixteen piece. That was nice. And the three recommendations that Dennis Knuprock made regarding that, I'd love to see come back full circle.
Awesome. Two dot eleven, I've been just doing my typical text and email, so we'll just move on. He said no comment.
I did hear, I was like.
No, that's good. No comment. But I, but I, I love Jess's democratizing access to speak. So I appreciate that. Yeah, Commissioner Kilo was very quick to say no comment. So, um, at this point, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I got a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 That sounds unanimous to me. One, two, three, four, five ayes. We are adjourned. Thank you, guys.